I have a comment on something that's on the consent calendar. Give me a good chance to take that. What did they ask at the beginning? Twelve, the clerk of the board right now. And she's got a slip, I think she can fill out.
Got a request, yeah, I saw that. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Good morning, yes. Oh, hey Fred, how are you? Thank you for looking into that, I appreciate it. I got back to the constituent, I don't know just kind of what was going on, so. Okay, good. Yeah, because that wasn't like last, it was up to Friday or something to complain, I think it was the city. Okay, it was perfect. Okay, good, good deal. Glad to hear we're working that out, nice to meet you Fred.
Morning. Good, how are you? Nice seeing you.
Good morning all. Nice to see so many people here this morning. Thank, welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. If you please stand and join me for the flag salute, and remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel very safe this morning. Our first item of business, number one, is the presentation given by the Sheriff's Department on its Community Oriented Policing Services Hiring Recovery Program. Morning Sheriff, welcome to our chambers this morning.
Good morning, and thank you for having me here today. I basically wanted to come over and thank the board, and Jean Rousseau, and everybody here that was involved in helping us obtain this grant. It's a three-year funded grant, as you know, little over a million dollars. It puts 12 deputy sheriffs in the community. The concept of community-based officers obviously has been around for a long time, and these officers are going to be working in these communities, and I have a list of them, so you'll be able to meet your community-based officer, the ones in Visaya, the ones at Goshen, wherever they might be, they also work for you, as you know. And they're going to be the eyes and ears of the department, but they're also going to do a lot of gang prevention, intervention with our explorers and our POW program and other programs we might develop. But I want to make it very clear that there are also going to be a suppression unit. They'll be trained with our grant, with our gang units from the north end, the south end, to supplement those gang units and be able to, so I'll be able to use a, be able to call upon a strike force of 20 to 25 deputy sheriffs who are trained in gang suppression. And as always, as I've always said, suppression will be, always be my number one component. So, I just wanted to come before you and thank you. We had some explorer competition over the weekend, and our explorers, and that's a great preventive tool, as you know. Our deputies worked with those kids, and we had 40 of our own out there, and I was so proud of them, you know, they, they just carry the emblem of the Sheriff's Department, the pride, their uniforms, and work with our officers, and I think that's the future of our organization as we pull those kids up to the next level. But when you see their sense of pride, and how they wear their uniforms, you can't help but be proud of them. I think we came in fourth overall, but we did receive a lot of trophies at the competition, and some of those explorers are here today. But again, I have a list of those officers who'll be serving you in your communities, and feel free to afterwards, we'll be able to meet them and see what communities they're serving. They're all well-trained officers, they're seasoned officers, and we backfield with the other 12. And so, you know, there's been always the questions of what happens when the grant runs out? Well, we'll seek, try to get it extended, we'll seek resources in other areas, and continue to the best we can. But we need them now, and we have them, and I think they're going to provide us with a very useful tool in the community. Thank you.
Thank you Sheriff, just a comment I wanted to make, is the undersheriff going to speak also this morning?
He has a list of all the officers.
All right, very good, well I'll let him talk first next then. Morning Mr. Cleak.
Morning Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for giving me an extended period of time after the sheriff's remarks. Just wanted to share with you maybe a little recap, that in July of 2009 is when the Sheriff's Department was awarded the grant under COP's Hiring Recovery Program. And from July to October is when we spent our time essentially going through a hiring process, and as you recall, on October 12th of 2009, we actually brought on and swore in 12 officers to begin this extended program. And as of March 1st, those officers were, officers were all trained, field training officers were assigned, and they completed their assignments. And we made a transition of the new officers, who are actually taking on responsibilities in the outline or substation areas, and we took a look at our more experienced officers who have had an opportunity to work in a lot of the different communities, and they're here today, and have taken on those roles as the community-based policing officers, gang prevention and suppression officers. Let me share with you who those officers are. They are representative of all your districts and will be serving you. Deputy Jaime Garza will be working in Goshen, Deputy Yvonne Hara-Meal, the Ivanhoe area, Deputy David Rhodes, Strathmore and Plainview, Deputy Scott Doyle, Woodville, Poplar and Woodville Labor Camp areas. Deputy Jessica Zandeez, she will be in the Terabella, Ducor and Rich Grove areas. Deputy John Nicholson will be in East and South Porter Ville areas. Deputy Rick Serta will be in the Early Mart area. Deputy Tim Johnson, Tipton and Pixley. Deputy Louis Pineda, Alpa and Allison, Allensworth. Deputy James Howe, Orosee and Monson-Sultana area. Deputy Jerry Diaz will be in the Cutler, Yedam and Seville areas, and Deputy Paul Gilray will be in the Traver and New London areas. These officers do come with an extended amount of experience, their social interaction and understanding of not just being about a police officer, but will go farther than that. Will really be working with Health and Human Services, the Resource Management Agencies, all the departments that the county has, we want to be an extended avenue or a method for the community and citizens to know that those officers will stop, you know, and what they might be doing in one area to help them achieve the goals of providing community or customer service in all areas. So we're very happy to have them. All their units are parked outside today, representative of the areas that they work in, they all have the decals on the side, serving the community of those that I just listed this morning. And so, give us some pride and some ownership in each of those areas as well, and to be identified to the community. So we're very happy. This is never come at a more of a better time in our crisis of the economic and the budgetary issues that we have. And it is, in a sense, a small cavalry that has come to help the Sheriff's Department, because without them, you know, it will give us a little more treading in the water, so to speak, as we go forward, working with everyone to provide the best law enforcement services possible for Tulare County. Thank you.
I'd like to give my members an opportunity to speak today, and I'll begin on the left with Mr. Van Pohl.
All right, I just want to thank you for bringing this program here to us, Sheriff and Dow, we are undersheriff, I'll go with titles since it is a law enforcement ceremony this morning. I appreciate all that you guys have done, I know that the officers are out in force already in the communities. I've been able to be down in Early Mart with Deputy Serta, and seeing him at the town council meetings, as well as at the Community Resource Center grand opening. He's very involved with the community already, and I can already see him interacting with children, and I think that he's going to be a good big brother for them in the community and really serve that community well. I even car pooled with Deputy Pineda out to Alpa the other day, and that was really nice, and saved a little bit of gas, and also helped him out too. So it worked out, it kept him company on his long drive out to Alpa, but it's a great program, and it's great to see these communities each, they do have a sense of ownership, they feel like that deputy is their deputy, and they're building relationships already, and I look forward to seeing this go forward. I hope that that money is in the bank already, because we know with government finance these days, that that's really going to be the kicker, and we, I guess if it's a federal grant, we don't have to worry, because the feds will just print money if they don't have it, so. But thank you very much, and I look forward to this program continuing. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
You know, Sheriff, I'm glad you took the chance. You know, there were, this is a grant that was available to everyone, and there weren't a whole lot of folks that went after it, and so I think you're to be commended for your commitment to the community, to the county, because there's, I don't know that there was some risk-taking, but you know, this took a big commitment on your part to recognize that we needed to be able to sustain this, it only being a three-year grant, so again, you need to be commended for stepping out and going after this grant, because this is providing some much-needed services in some of these communities where you need to have an officer present, and that officer needs to have a relationship with the members of that community. I guess most of all, I am thrilled to death to see that I'll be working with the explorers, with the POW. I've had a chance to work and talk with a couple of your officers that work with the explorer youth, and you have some of the best people I've ever met, working with these young people, and you're right, you're going to bring those young people up, and they'll be, they'll probably be the replacements for these guys when they get ready to retire. So, again, commend you on a wonderful job of bringing some experienced officers into these positions, and for the kind of work we all know they're going to do, so thank you.
Ms. Renus?
Yes, I'd also like to commend the sheriff and undersheriff, and everybody in the room that works for the, for the county and in the area of the Sheriff's Department, you do a great job, but this is so important to these unincorporated areas, to have someone there that they can depend on, on a daily basis, and know they're going to be there if they're needed. And, because I worked with Terabella and the Ducor area, and we do have a gang problem out there, we know it's extensive gang problem, so in the future, possibly working through these officers and having like many gang summits in these areas too, to get the people together, and to get them around these officers, so they will become a part of these communities. And I know that the Terabella area is very, very happy that they're going to have their own officer out there and somebody they can work with. So, great that we got this, this money, especially at these tough times, like we were saying, but the people that's going to benefit are the people in these unincorporated areas, where they will have someone that they can truly depend on. So, congratulations you guys are coming up with, and congratulations to all the people in this room that, that work for the county Sheriff's Department, you do an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, I just wanted to add my commendation as well. One of the things I wanted to point out was that there was a commitment from the Sheriff's Office and from the County of Tulare, because this grant was, did have a match requirement, so that there is fully funding, and then there's a part that has to be paid for by the county. In my mind, the reason that we were able to do this was because of the expert and well-managed force that you have in the Sheriff's Department, where recognizing our financial difficulties, you were able to pare down your population, so that when this opportunity came along, we could take advantage of it. I think it's very simple why some of the other departments, Fresno County is an example, were not able to take advantage of this, is because they did not take those preliminary steps to reduce their forces, and so the ability then to add additional people to their forces just was not a possibility for them. And so I think it was the good management which allowed us to be able to take advantage of this opportunity. There is an act of faith in the part of the county and your department, that we will meet these match requirements in the future, and I'm confident that we will. The other thing I wanted to say was that, in my mind, the beauty of community-based officers really is in one word, and that's relationships. You know, for many people, the view of the deputy sheriff is somebody in a patrol car who's normally responding to some kind of an emergency, and thankfully, they are there for those emergencies, but they don't really have the time in those situations to build relationships. But a community-based officer who is more along the lines of the old days of a beat cop, somebody who is in a community day after day, developing relationships with the leaders and the people of those communities, are able to do something that the folks in our patrol cars cannot do, and that is to build these relationships. And from those relationships come tips, information, people who have confidence and trust, they don't fear the police, they see the sheriff as someone to be trusted, and they can come to them in times of trouble, and that's what we need. We need people to step forward. There's not enough policemen in the world to solve all of our problems. People in the communities have to step forward when there are problems and be part of the solution. And I think the community-based officer is really the heart of that opportunity to create those relationships that give people trust and confidence in your department and the County of Tulare, that when there's a problem, I can feel confident about calling the Sheriff's Office and not worry about the implications for myself. So, congratulations to all of you, thank you for being here this morning, it's a great showing, and we're really pleased and happy to have this program up and running in Tulare County. Again, thank you Sheriff for your leadership, and, you know, we have so many people here, and you've brought your vehicles, we might just take a five-minute break at this time, and we'll do the public comment period first, and then we'll go out and we'll take a look at the vehicles, and then give you an opportunity to get back to work. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
At this time, we will have the public comment period. Anyone wishing to address the board on matters which are within our jurisdiction but not on today's calendar are invited to come forward to give us your name and address. Is there anyone here for public comment? Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Worley, and members of the board. I would just like to real quickly make an announcement that the Workforce Investment Board is real excited about. The Department of Labor has awarded a one point, I mean, excuse me, an $8.2 million grant to the nine whips of the Central Valley to provide training and other employment services for dislocated workers throughout the valley. I know the board values regional collaboration, and this grant award represents just one more step in the long tradition of regional work amongst the valley whips. About $1 million of these funds will stay right here in Tulare County for the Employment Connection System we have in Tulare County, to improve the skills and employment prospects of the workers in our community. The Tulare County whip was actually selected from the whips in the Central Valley as the lead fiscal agent for this award, and we've worked with Department of Labor over the last nine months to secure this funding, and this funding will just provide more opportunities during this difficult time for the local economy, for people to have the resources needed to gain the skills to remain competitive in the workforce. We're putting out a press release today, and I just wanted to make sure that the board was fully informed of it as that information gets out, so thank you.
Thank you. And for our World Wide Web folks who are listening to us, that was Adam Peck, our Workforce Investment Board Director. Thank you Adam.
Thank you Chairman.
At this time, we'll take a five-minute recess. Yeah. That's why I called you.
I thought maybe they'd hold you in or something.
Like herding cats. Board is back in session at this time, and we will take up number, item number three, our Board of Supervisors Matters. Before I begin, we are minus one member today. Mr. Rashida is, I would joke and say he's on a fact-finding mission, he's on vacation for a few days, so he's not, not with us. And start with you Ms. Renus, as far as supervisor matters.
Tomorrow, there'll be a group of us going up to Fresno to a meeting on the Williamson Act, and maybe strategies for the future. We, we kind of feel like that this may be going away, taking away the last two years, and they only left $1,000 in it, so it doesn't look real, real good for the future. So we're going to be going up there and just hearing different people's views and ideas and strategies on maybe what we can do in the future to, if we have to cancel this, maybe there'll be something else that we can do to help the farmers with their tax base, so. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Cox?
I've spent the last couple of weeks, besides working on events that we've had for our youth in the county, poring over our budget, looking at grant funding programs to help us fund the projects we're doing with our youth. Yesterday, we received, I believe, 19 applications for the Step Up Service Learning Grants that are granted to high schools, so it was a very good, a good turnout. There were high schools that had thought, well, we received it last time, we can't apply this time, so the first round was rather low, but we had a very good show this time from all the districts, very excited about looking at the creativity of these teachers and the young people in our community, and the projects that they can do, so we're looking forward to that, and we should have that come to the board within the next three or four weeks.
Very good. Mr. Van Pohl?
Okay, the one item I'd like to bring up today is just a reminder to everyone, we had a planning meeting yesterday for the Tulare Gang Awareness Forums. We have two forums, the dates of those forums are April 15th and April 22nd, they will go from about 5:30 till 8:00, and we're expecting a great turnout, this is the first of its type in Tulare, and we sure hope that we're going to have a positive impact on not just the youth, but the parents and families in the community as well. So, really looking forward to that event, and I hope that everyone can attend and have their different organizations attend to help make a difference as well, so.
Thank you. Last Thursday, we had a Step Up Event in the community of Ivanhoe, well-attended. Want to thank Jed Chernobyl from our office, and Phil Cox for their presence there. The really good thing about this, it was a good, good event, and as I say, it was well-attended, but the community really stepped up, along with our probation department, and put this thing together. Our involvement as a board was minimal, we made some financial contributions for some gifts that were given out at the end of the, of the program, but good turnout, and aimed at parents, and helping parents deal with drug issues, I'm sorry, gang issues, and again, I thought it was very successful, and this is the second event we've had now in Ivanhoe, so, and this is the one of, this is sort of the beginning of many, this particular approach is to have ongoing dialogue with parents and training for them, that will be, that'll be coming in the future. Last thing, just to mention, I will be in Sacramento Thursday and Friday this week, Thursday for the Executive Committee of CSAC, as you might guess, one of the top issues of concern is the state budget. I suspect it will be so for, for the next few years. And then, on Friday, I will be at the Commission for State Mandates adjudicating claims against the state of California for unfunded mandates, so we'll see how that goes. At this time, we'll pick up our consent calendar, I have had a request to take one item off calendar, I'm sorry, to handle separately, and that's item number 19. Are there any other items that members of the board would like to handle separately?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we need to pull item number 17 off of the consent calendar.
That's right, item number 17 is off calendar, so that will be come off, and then we'll handle items 19 separately. If there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
A move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Renus, seconded by Mr. Cox, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous 4-0, we'll take up item number 19. We'll have a staff report first briefly if we could, and then we have a request by Mr. Smuckler from the Public Defender's Office.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, members of the board, Tim Huntley, Human Resources Director. The staff report is pretty straightforward. State disability insurance is mandatory in the private sector, it's voluntary in the public sector, it's awarded by units, the majority of county employee bargaining units participate in this program. We had a number of inquiries about this for bargaining unit 20, which is professional employees, and we went through the process which was described in the agenda item. When it first came up, there was not a lot of interest, second time in December of last year, there was greater interest. Folks were notified on December 7th about the options, then again on the 18th of December as to what the process would be, and then finally, the vote was taken, and a majority of those voting opted for the program. The showing of interest by 40% of the employees, since there's no specific procedure in state law governing how, how you should go through the voting process or what that is, we followed basically the one area that is fairly typical, which is to use what is used for agency shop votes in the union environment, where you have to have a showing of 30% interest in order to take it to a vote, and the simple majority of those voting determines whether they have an agency shop or not, and we applied that same logic, since there is no other guidance available. And I would be happy to respond to questions.
Other any questions, members?
No, of course, I just noticed, you know, when I read through this first time, I thought, okay, well, half, 50% of the members voted. You're hard-pressed to get 50% of anybody to vote in any election, so I think that was a good number for me, as I look at what, you know, election numbers and how many people vote, you know, it looked like half of the members voted, which, if half of the people in the United States voted, you know, our registrar, our voters would be slammed, so I think that's a good representation, because half the people voted, which is more than normally votes.
And I think the last point I'd like to make is, we don't have a position on this. This isn't HR recommending it or opposing it, it's up to the employees, and so that was what we did, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smuckler? Good morning.
Thank you for giving me the time to address the board. I don't have any disagreement with what Mr. Huntley said. Regarding the 50% turnout, I sort of look at it as a glass half-empty. I assume that most of the other people, and I'm not even sure who all the people are, I know this, it includes other supervising attorneys, but there are 59 people in the groups, I'm not even sure who the other people are. I have a suspicion that the fact that there's only 50% turnout means that people either weren't reading their email, because this was done entirely by email, nothing in writing, or they didn't pay attention to the fact that this was going to reduce their paychecks by about $1,000 over each year. If you look at the numbers, I believe they said that 18 people voted in favor of the coverage, and granted, that's, as Mr. Huntley said, that's the majority of the people who voted, however, we're talking about 59 people altogether, and that means that, you know, the majority of people either didn't vote or voted against it, and as I said, I just have a sneaking suspicion that people weren't aware that by not voting at all, they're leaving themselves open for a $1,000 bill. This is a group that does already have a different version of disability insurance as part of our regular package of benefits, and of course, we also have sick time. Personally, just from a personal budget standpoint, I'd rather not spend $1,000 at this time. What I would request is that HR consider doing this again, but in writing, simply doing it by inter-office mail, so that we know that people actually saw it, and hopefully, you know, at some point, they'll get the message that this is an expensive thing that they're voting on. And really, that's my only request. As Mr. Huntley pointed out, this is, it's no burden on the county either way, it's not an expense that the county bears, but on the other hand, it is binding on all 59 individuals if nothing else is done on this. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Mr. Huntley, if you could come forward, I did have a question, I know this is effective April 1st, so my only, my concern about the request is one of timeliness in terms of being able to, to deal with what the request was about.
It wouldn't be necessary for us to go forward with April 1st until this board actually approves the item, it couldn't take place anyway, because actually, the board will execute documents to have this go forward.
And how did this relate, how did this compare with other bargaining units in terms of response?
I have to tell you, I don't know, because that preceded my coming here. This is the first time in the five years that I've been here that this has been brought up again. We did have noticed meetings, but I don't know, and we did have people come in and speak, but once again, I can't-
but once again, I can't say I don't have records of who showed up or who didn't.
I, I have one question. Is there any way, or do we have any record of email receipt? I mean, is there a way of checking to make sure this didn't go into spam, or that they actually received the email, maybe just opened it or just deleted it? Is there just any way that we can check?
To be honest with you, presumably, we put a, I, I didn't do it personally, but presumably, we put a, a response, mail a receipt when it's open kind of thing.
Okay.
But I don't know that in this case. I would have to look into that.
Okay.
And we either did or we didn't. We obviously couldn't recreate it. If we did, we should be able to have evidence there.
Okay.
These are professional positions. These are high-level attorneys, engineers, planners. So all of these people have email. It isn't like we're
Yeah.
dealing with, you know, if people don't open their email, they don't open their email, but that's, that's true. We could certainly send out a hard-paper ballot.
Mr. Sheriff, if I may, I mean, I, you know, my thought was the same, Tim, not on the latter part of your comment, but these are high-level people. The comment that people aren't reading their emails or just didn't pay attention concerns me more than the vote. You know, I, I would tend to leave this the way it is, and, and I would approve it today without another vote. I just, you know, saying people didn't open their emails or didn't pay attention when there were opportunities to go and ask questions is enough. I think we did our due diligence.
Okay.
And with that, I would make the motion to approve.
Motion? Second?
I, I, I mean, my, my perspective is, is just that, you know, I, I appreciate the concern that this is a thousand-dollar decision, basically, to move forward with this. And, you know, I, these are high-level people, but sometimes you, you misread things or you don't pay attention to it all the way. I just, my concern would just be, if it's an easy process to send something out, to get an email receipt to show that it has been acknowledged or opened, then you know, and maybe the vote will turn out the exact same way, or maybe it's going to turn out twice as many for this program versus against it. I just think that we have to have that proof as an employer, that they at least acknowledge that and see, and, and saw it. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, ask Mr. Smith a question. When I, when I send an email, I can go into something called properties and see if the people I sent it to opened it. Is that, would that be the same if you send a blast email?
I would have to hear from, I can't believe you guys are going...
That seems like a very quick...
Yeah. Well, and, and I'm not, I'm not saying send out a paper ballot. That, you know, that, that's a lot of work, but to get an email receipt, to just say, hey, this person has opened the email, it would just be nice to at least see that. That way, they've acknowledged it. Maybe they opened it and threw it away or, or whatever, but I, I think at least we will have that. So...
Whatever the board's wishes are, fine.
Mr. Chair, I think we've all wanted second chances at elections and votes.
[laughing] Okay, I, I don't have a second to the motion. Is there, is there going to be...
Well, I would, I would make a motion that we would continue this...
You already have a motion on the table.
We have a motion on the floor, so we have to decide whether it's going to die for lack of a second, and I'm going to give us about two more seconds to make that decision.
I'm not, I won't...
If there is no second, then it will die for lack of a second, and now entertain another motion.
Okay, I would, is, is two weeks enough time?
Well, certainly, one week is enough time to find out if the record is already there.
Okay, well, uh...
I mean, we're dark next week.
We're dark next week, okay, well then...
So two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
I would, I would motion that we continue this item to, would it be the first of April? Or, April sixth, I'm sorry. I, I would motion that we continue this item to April sixth. That way, we can check the email receipts. If we don't have them, then maybe we can get those, and then we'll go forward that way. So...
Let me make sure I understand then.
Yeah, there's a motion then to, to, to see whether or not there was, in fact, a record showing that people received the email.
Didn't open the emails.
If they did, then the motion, then the decision would stand.
Well, my, my motion is just to continue for, for two weeks.
Well, for what purpose?
For, for that, for the, for the purpose of checking...
Well, because I, my thought, how about handling it this way? If, if we have a record which shows people received the emails and opened it, or whatever that record will show, that the, that the decision would stand.
The vote stands, yes.
In the event that the, the evidence indicates that there was no record of receipt and opening, they would resubmit another email
Okay.
and bring that back. If that gives enough time, two weeks, we would, we would do that. Does that give you enough time for that?
We will attempt to do that in two weeks. If we should be able to find out today, then the question is, can, we should be able to put something together. If we need more time to make sure everybody sees it, then three weeks.
Okay.
If only for the processing purposes, but hopefully, I will know before the end of your closed session whether or not we have a record.
So is everybody clear on the motion now?
Yeah.
Or second the motion?
Second, Dan.
We have a motion by Mr. Vanapul, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. We have vote three to one for the motion to carries, and I concur with what Mr. Vanapul said. I don't think we want to go backwards and go back to paper ballots. The email is very effective, and I'm more inclined to lose something if it's in a
Yeah.
paper form than if it's on my email account, because it's always retrievable, even if it's thrown in the trash. So therefore, I think we have your marching orders. Thank you very much.
We have your direction. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will go to our public hearing, item number four. This is from our Resource Management Agency for the Adoption of Resolution Certifying Negative Declaration Prepared for General Plan Amendment zero-nine dash zero-zero-two for the Tulare County two thousand nine housing element. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Worthy and fellow board members. My name's Mike Washam. I'm a planner at RMA, and I was the project planner for the housing element update. Pleased to announce today that the RMA was able to conduct, complete this update without outside consultations, without outside consultants, and saving the money in the process. I'd like to take a moment just to acknowledge another planner who's not here today. She's back at RMA, working on other projects. April Hill was extremely helpful in producing this update. What is the housing element? By law, every jurisdiction in California is required to adopt a housing element as part of the general plan. Purpose of the housing element is to ensure that local governments adequately plan for meeting the needs of housing for all of the people living within the community, regardless of their income. The underlying premise is that for the private market to provide the housing needs of those people, government needs to adopt land use plans and regulatory systems which provide opportunities for, and that do not unduly constrain, housing development. It's important that the county adopt the housing element, because having an adopted and certified housing element is one requirement to compete for state, state and federal grant programs that can be used for a wide range of projects, including infrastructure, housing development, and economic development. The, the process involved in updating the element is, we've looked at, we've reviewed the previous element for progress and appropriateness and revised accordingly. We, we created a, a current housing needs assessment, what's going on in the county today as far as housing needs. We incorporated the projected housing needs over the planning period, and we analyzed potential housing constraints. Together, all those pieces fit together to form a comprehensive update, and this is all surrounded by a framework of public participation. The county has made a diligent effort to achieve public participation across all segments of, of the population living within the unincorporated areas. We had an advisory committee. Excuse me, I, I'm going to read a little bit, because I want to make sure that we acknowledge all the groups that were involved in this, comprised of the Central Valley Christian Housing, Self-Help Enterprises, CSSET, the Housing Authority, King's Tulare County Continuum of Care, and other interested parties, and a wide range of Tulare County agencies. The, the committee was charged with reviewing the programs from the previous housing element for their appropriateness, effectiveness, and progress of implementation. The county held a, a public stakeholder meeting, which had an open invitation to the public that was announced during regular meetings of your board and the planning commission. In addition, invitations were sent out to two hundred stakeholders. Advertisements were placed in regional newspapers in both English and Spanish. County issued a press release that was highlighted on the website. A public service announcement was aired on local radio. The May twenty-first meeting was well-attended by representatives from California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation, the Cuiya Delta Healthcare District, United Way of Tulare County, America Friends Services Committee, Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment, National Network in Action, and the Tulare County Citizens for Responsible Growth. Staff presentations were made at a number of community meetings in the past year, including a King's County, or King's and Tulare County Continuum of Care meeting in Porterville, a general meeting from the Race, the Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment held here in Visalia, also meetings, monthly meetings of the Tipton Redevelopment Projectary Committee and Negotiation Planning Committee. A community questionnaire was produced in both Spanish and English, and proved to be an effective tool in achieving public participation. Over twenty percent of the respondents were in Spanish. A dedicated page on the website was put to the housing element update. The page allowed viewers to look at draft housing element documents, learn of upcoming meetings, view PowerPoint presentations and agendas and minutes from, from those community meetings and advisory committee meetings. The public comments that, that the county has received via the questionnaires, and all the statements voiced during the workshops and, and the meetings have been considered and incorporated into the update. Housing needs assessment, that we, we looked at the current situation and assessment of the housing throughout the unincorporated area. We look at population, employment trends, household characteristics, special needs households, meaning elderly, farm workers, persons with disabilities, and even the homeless. We had a, conducted a intensive, extensive housing condition survey, at-risk housing, at-risk housing of those publicly assisted units that are at risk of converting in the next ten years from, to market rate rentals. The, the element identified one hundred and thirty-two units that are at risk of converting to market rate over the next ten years. We analyzed potential housing constraints. Housing constraints can come in forms of government regulations, zoning, improvement standards. Non-government constraints are more or less economic, the availability or lack thereof of financing, the cost of construction, et cetera. We reviewed the previous housing element for progress in implementation, the effectiveness of the programs, and the goals and objectives, and revised accordingly. Projected, anticipated projected need, this is a number that the state allocates to each individual county, and TCAG is responsible for allocating those numbers to individual jurisdictions within the county. We at Tulare County have a responsibility of providing anticipated increase in housing units of seven thousand thirty-five from the planning period from January first of oh-seven through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Of those seven thousand units, the income category breakdown is, as follows in the chart. This works out to nine hundred and thirty-five...
Don't leave that chart when answering questions.
Sure.
I didn't want to cut him off, but I don't...
Well, what I was going to, this works out to nine hundred and thirty-five units per year. Actual development is not going to reach these heights. Even in the boom years, the height of the real estate boom between two thousand four and two thousand seven, the county averaged six hundred and seventy-eight units. Do you have a question?
If I can, Mr. Chair, so that there's no misunderstanding, we identify that there's a supply of land available to accommodate this type of growth. We're not knocking over malls to make room for apartments. We're not knocking over commercial businesses. All you have to do is identify an available resource of land, and that's countywide.
Correct.
And you're not mandated to build seven thousand houses. These are just numbers the state arbitrarily deals out to make sure that there is a planning process in place. I want to really simple that down.
That is correct. These, these numbers are, the reason we have to go with these numbers, they're, they're mandated by the state. We have to show that we can accommodate those. In a, in a, a future slide, I'll mention the housing adequate site inventory, which you're, you're speaking directly of.
Thank you.
The housing program provides, a program set forth to what the county is planning to undertake to achieve the goals and policies that we set out in, in the plan. A draft housing element was submitted to, a preliminary administrative draft element was sent, submitted to HCD. At the middle of the summer, around August eleventh, we received response about Thanksgiving time. We incorporated the recommendations into the public draft, and this draft has been duly circulated for public comment. Negative deck, an initial study in a negative deck were created by the county. The, the county environmental assessment officer approved the negative deck, and it was submitted to State Clearinghouse for a thirty-day review and comment period. An intent, notice of availability, intent to adopt a negative deck was published in the newspaper for thirty-day review. That review period ended March eighth without comment. And I, I must have skipped over the, I'll detail a little bit on the inventory side, because I did, it was one slide back before, before we were questioned. The adequate site inventory was, is, is in two thousand four, the state required a site-specific inventory to adequately supply or show that there's, there's ample properly-zoned land to adequately build those, those structures if developers were to come and do that. I took it, or the staff has taken it under consideration to try to find those sites that were already properly-zoned, so we wouldn't have a rezoning program. If a jurisdiction didn't have the available sites, within one year, they would have to go through a rezoning program to zone enough vacant and underutilized land to create enough developable land. We painstakingly went through all of our unincorporated area, site by site, and, and created a sufficient inventory that we do not have to go through any rezoning. accomplished.
That does answer that question. Thank you.
The Planning Commission held a public meeting on March tenth to receive comments and make recommendations to your board. No comments were received. The Planning Commission made recommendations to the board to certify the negative deck and to adopt the Tulare County two thousand nine housing element. The RMA is requesting your Board of Supervisors to receive this staff presentation, conduct a public hearing to consider the housing element and the negative declaration, adopt a resolution certifying the negative declaration as recommended by the Planning Commission, authorize the chairman to sign a notice of determination, and direct the clerk to return the signed notice of declaration to the RMA, and adopt a separate resolution adopting the two thousand nine housing element as recommended by the Planning Commission. That concludes staff report. If you have any further questions.
All right. Just a comment, because it's timely in terms also, this is a general plan amendment, but also with the issuance of our new general plan coming out this Thursday, because there was a recent decision affecting some counties and, and cities in Northern California, where they essentially had created no low-income housing availabilities in those communities because of their zoning rules, and the court ruled that that was not, that was, I know it was unconstitutional, but certainly it was contrary to state law, and therefore, set it aside. And so it's important that we do allow for the appropriate kinds of housing throughout our communities and within our county. And, and I, one of, one of the goals of this general plan update was to assure that in our unincorporated communities, we did not zone them out, because in some of our communities, there was no land available for construction, because it was zoned strictly agricultural, completely around those communities. They had no opportunities to expand. And part of our general plan here, by, with the Hamlet Plan and so forth, is to allow for that to happen, and as my colleague has said, this is not mandating that people will build in these communities, but it gives them the opportunity to build in these communities, which up until now, some of them have not had. So I think it's very appropriate. It's timely. This, this plan is on track to do what we need to do, and it, and it will fit very well with our general plan update as it comes out this coming Thursday. Are there other questions or comments from staff or board members? Seeing and hearing no one, we will open the public hearing. Before we begin the public hearing, I wanted to welcome Mel Gong, who's here today from the, from the Planning Commission. Other, other members of the Planning Commission, we'd be glad to acknowledge you today. Thank you, Mel, for being here. Anyone from the public wish to address the board this morning? Seeing and, and hearing no one, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action. Mr. Chair, a motion to...
Mr. Chair, a motion to accept staff recommendation in regards to the housing element.
And I'll second that motion.
It's a big day.
Motion and second. Cast your votes. Votes four to zero. Thank you very much, staff, for bringing that to us today. And that will take us now to our one untimed item, item number 33, request from the Resource Management Agency regarding an update on the batch non-renewal of substandard prime parcels under the Williamson Act contracts. Good morning.
Good morning Supervisor Worthley and members of the board. I am Fred Bruce Wayless. I'm with the Planning Branch of RMA. Pleasure for me to be here this morning.
Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that. We, we have a item to present to you this morning that is a very important part of our Tulare County community, and it's the use of the land, how it's used, and particularly affected in trying to sustain the agricultural viability of the county, and those policies that we have in place to, to nurture agribusiness and to make proper decisions on how that land is going to be used. And I think a lot of the board members are very familiar with some of the issues that were going on. Supervisor Ennis indicated going up to Fresno tomorrow to a summit of sorts, and there have been a number of these summits or meetings that have been going on for some time with governmental entities, and I know there was, I think, Senate Committee with the state legislature where supervisors had an opportunity to voice some of their concerns as well. So this is a, it's an ongoing dialogue that doesn't seem to have any particular quick solutions for it, but we're keeping this issue monitored to find out those folks that have some creative ideas or some other approaches to dealing with this particular issue. Last year, the Board of Supervisors had an opportunity to have RMA staff, as well as the assessor, make a number of different presentations to you. And during that period of time, they had an opportunity to identify some of the issues going on with regards to the fiscal well-being of the, of the county, with regard to subvention funds that support the Williamson Act. They also talked about particular considerations that the county may have to, or take in should the State of California make certain decisions. Well, July 28th of last year, our Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger vetoed the Williamson Act program and left, I think, $1,000 in the, in the account for that particular program. The, the result was a $3.5 million difficulty for the, for the county of Tulare.
Reduction.
And not to mention that the other counties in the state of California, I think $35 million or more that was allocated for, for subventions. So the, the Board of Supervisors made a decision to look at some things that the staff might be able to do. So on August 25th of last year, the board directed staff to perform some following items. The first thing was to place a moratorium on new contracts. The second was to initiate non-renewal of contracts on substandard prime parcels. The other direction to staff was to research potential long-term options that the county might consider. And the other was to delay non-renewal on non-prime lands. Well, I can tell you that staff performed the work as directed by the board, and there had been no new Williamson contracts that had been accepted. In addition, the non-renewal process was initiated, and I'll be talking about that in just a moment. In addition, staff has been monitoring the dialogue for solutions to the Williamson Act issues, as I just commented on. Also, non-prime land non-renewal has been delayed, but there was certainly discussion and consideration for that particular option for the, for the to consider, and we'll be talking about that this morning. Some statistics with respect to the notices of non-renewal, this sort of comprises the essence of the effort made by staff last year to move forward with initiating the non-renewals. We identified some 9,400 prime parcels that are not in renewal, about 1,200, 1,300 acres of prime parcels, less than 10 acres in size. And that 10 acres in size really has to do with the economic viability of 10 acres or 10 acres that over a period of time have not become viable from agriculture, but may be a parcel of land that home sites have been developed or other types of uses and not primarily agriculture. So we sent notices to 340 separate landowners. 88 landowner responses got back to us saying, "No, you're, you're incorrect. Could you please check your records or check the aerial photographs or check the, the sites because we, we do have viable agricultural uses on our property." So staff confirmed 85 of those that, in fact, that was true, that we considered them to be viable. So they were taken off the list. We had three that were unaccepted responses after we reviewed the records. So we ended up with 255 non-renewals comprising about 1,244 acres, and that represents about $5,600 under a full subvention. So that kind of gives you a sense of, of what was done last year. Well, we have the issue of agricultural lands and the nonsense of non-renewals with the subventions, but we have also other issues that are related to the, to the Williamson Act. We have, and I think we're very fortunate Tulare County when it comes to preserving and protecting agricultural sustainability, and that's because we do have a Williamson Act program with some uniform rules. We do have a Rural Valley Lands Plan that is a wonderful tool to evaluate land that is suitable or unsuitable for, for development. And then we also have our agricultural zoning. So those three things are the, are the policies that help sustain agricultural viability and help manage development or premature development of agricultural lands. But there, there, the times are changing, we've recognized, because we've had a number of contacts from various entities who want to develop solar farms, and they're looking on, on agricultural lands. We've talked with counties in, in other parts of California and asked them, "How are they dealing with this when it comes to the issue of whether or not a solar farm is compatible use in an agricultural zone? Or is it compatible in a Williamson Act?" So I've had conversations with the Department of Conservation. I've had conversations with some of our other colleagues in, in the planning, trying to deal with this particular issue. At present, we don't have language in our uniform rules or in, in the zoning ordinance that deals explicitly with that type of use. So we're, we're kind of moving our way through because we've, we've received five applications for solar farms, and we're now evaluating the potential compatibility or non-compatibility. And I think this is an item we'll want to bring back to you soon, so that we can discuss it as a separate item. But in, in giving the update to you today, I just wanted to make you aware of that, that circumstance that we have-
Fred, before you leave that issue, what, can you give us an insight on what are your, what you're finding in your discussions with the Department of Conservation and other counties with the-
My, my discussion with the Department of Conservation is that they would support an agricultural land contract cancellation for a solar farm, if there are findings that can be made. And one example might be if the land perhaps is a, a class III or IV soil, poor soil, and perhaps there isn't water availability, so that the, the viability of the land for agricultural purposes is slim to none. And they said that they could support something like that for a solar farm project with the cancellation and making the appropriate findings. You know, we have this overarching issue too with the state of California in particular with the solar initiative. And I think the governor was yesterday or the, or the day before, is talking about further efforts to get State of California energy renewed with solar and, and wind and other types of energy that is sustainable. And we continue to see these efforts by the state wanting to do that. And of course, it starts to bump against some of the, what might be considered local sensibilities of, of land use and trying to protect our interests, but on the other time, overarching State of California types of visions and the things that they want to do. So I think the way that we're approaching this is that we're looking at each project on a case-by-case basis through a use permit, so that we can evaluate the potential impacts that project may have in a given area. I can tell you one thing, that when it comes to solar farms, there is an economy of scale that's involved with it, and in particular, infrastructure that has to be placed to connect to the grid. And we have two major north-south grids, one on the, on the east side and one on the, on the west side. So we see persons wanting to go on either end of the county, being in close proximity to the line, so they don't have to install as much infrastructure to connect and put that energy in that particular line. Well, certain parts of the county, we do have poor soils or perhaps lands that may not be suitable for irrigation or have the absence of irrigation. But it's a case-by-case evaluation, determine the suitability as to whether or not it fits with the character of the area, and I think this is the best way to deal with it now, absent any overarching policies that the, that the Board of Supervisors may, may adopt.
No, but from what you're saying, no one is considering that solar farms, despite the term "farm" on it, would be considered something which is under the Williamson Act contract as, as a, the type of thing that the Williamson Act contract would apply to. You're talking about a termination of the contract as opposed to continuing the contract.
Termination of the contract, even though I, I have, I have heard that one or more jurisdictions have found it compatible. So that, you know, that's a, I don't know the reasoning behind it, but it's a, it's a, it challenges my mind when I, when I look at that.
And Fred, just real quick, before you continue, I know, I know this is getting really off-topic from the Williamson Act talk, but when you said that the Department of Conservation could be supportive of the Williamson Act cancellation, does that mean they're going to offer relief from the penalties? Or is it just that they will be canceled?
They'll receive the penalties.
But that's kind of what I'm wondering, because when you make it-
No, no, they, they didn't mention anything monetarily or physically, they just indicated their, their, their position that they would not get involved to oppose.
Okay. Thank you.
Jake Raper, Director of RMA. We've had a lot of discussions at staff level. Even though the Department of Conservation has their opinion, we do have administrative rules and regulations which identify community utilities as compatible use for the Williamson Act contracts by use permit. And so the, the decision and the discussion is a long way from being over. From my viewpoint, I think solar farms are, can be considered compatible to Williamson Act contracts, and I think we need to keep an open mind as how we process and, and consider the opinions of other agencies and other factors. And so I just wanted to put that as part of the presentation, is that by no means has any decision been made today whether they are or not compatible with Williamson Act contract lands. In my opinion, I do not necessarily support the immediate cancellation of Williamson Act contracts in order for solar farms to go on those sites, because the penalties go to the state and not to the county, and so we need to look at a different financing mechanism and something that is of, of benefit to the county, should we take on the permitting of solar farms on Williamson Act contract lands. And what I would ask the board is not to take these comments as conclusions at this point, because we have a number of issues that we need to have discussion and dialogue on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask you something?
I have, I've had a lot of people interested in doing solar out in my area, especially out around the DuCor area. Thing that concerns me is if the infrastructure's put on those, say a 200-acre piece or 600-acre piece, what does that do to the tax base?
That's part of the discussion we have on.
If you leave it in the Williamson Act, you know, you're actually giving the, the solar guy the break.
Well, basically, my viewpoint is, is that we require a development agreement to go in there, and we assess some kind of revenue stream to the county. And I've advised the Ag Commission of this, or Ag Advisory Committee, that from my viewpoint is that we need to get a revenue stream for these types of uses coming in. From a practical side, solar farms are probably the, the easiest kind of infrastructure to remove from ag land to convert back to agricultural production at the end of the useful life of those kinds of facilities. You look at the type of infrastructure they put out there, it's not structures and buildings, and so therefore, the re, the conversion of those back to ag lands is, is much easier in the long run. Also, as we discussed at staff level, the technology for solar is changing. In 15 years from now, they may not need 200 acres to generate the kind of power that they need currently under current technology. So these are dynamic areas, and I think we need to stay open and try to visualize what's in the future.
I think the important thing here is that this is very preliminary discussion, and obviously there's a tremendous amount of further work needs to be done on this matter.
But my concern is just to protect the landowner.
Yes.
We want to protect the landowners.
Yes.
Thank you, Jay.
Fred, continue on. We're sorry we interrupted your presentation.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Fred. I had to put the mic- Okay, thank you, Mr. Raper. And, and as I, as I, as I mentioned before, the, the use permit process allows a complete public vetting, property owner, Jason property owners and so forth. So we'll be coming back to the Board of Supervisors on that particular topic, and we can talk a little bit more in details. Next steps. The staff is asking you to consider a couple of things today, and this one is to direct staff to initiate non-renewal on non-prime parcels, less than 40 acres in size. This particular discussion went back to last summer where the board was considering various options and made a decision, go on, on the prime land of 10 acres or less, based on their economic viability and so forth. And then as a consideration, perhaps another step would be start moving on non-renewals on the, on the non-prime parcels that are, are 40 acres in size. So that's one consideration for you this morning, is to direct staff accordingly. We would go through a very similar process that we did at the end of the year last year for the non-renewal on the, on the prime egg parcels. Second consideration that you might have is to direct staff to prepare an implementation plan, something more of a, of a strategy and an implementation for the elimination of the Williamson Act program through non-renewal of all Williamson Act contracts. The other consideration would be to direct staff to research other funding options for the Williamson Act program. So those are the three that we want to present to you this morning. There are probably other considerations or thoughts that you may have. We'd like you to, to give us some direction on this and how you'd like us to proceed. As, as I mentioned, Supervisor Ennis is going to be going to a, a summit tomorrow. There may be some more information-
I'll be there also.
I'll be there, okay, very good. Might be more information that we could glean, it might be helpful to us, and I think that a lot of the counties with the Williamson Act programs are in the same boat, you know, how, how properly to approach this in a sensible way and come up with not only an immediate remedy, but long-term type of strategy that we could sustain, the kind of program that we have and the benefits that are derived from the, from the Williamson Act. That, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, concludes my presentation. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Mr. Cox, yes?
I have a few questions, kind of a series here. First off, I want to, you know, commend staff on doing what we asked you to do. We had this, you know, meeting of the minds and said, "This is the direction we want you to go," which resulted in elimination of 1,244 acres at a, I'm going to assume a net income to the county of $5,600 per year. Rough figures, what did we spend to net $5,600 a year by going through this process? Three times, five times that number, 10 times that number?
Three times.
Three times that number? So we spent $17,000 chasing five. Okay, Mr. Russo, $3.4 million this year, that's a real, there's a real number for you, 3.4, 3.2, 5, you pick it. It's a- 3.4, 3.2, 5, you pick it, it's a real number. Where are you going to get that?
Well, we were able to absorb approximately half of it last year in the budget. And this coming year, if things don't change at the state level, we'll have to absorb it, the remaining half.
And what do you mean by absorb?
We will have to, we will have to reduce our cost of doing business by half of that subvention.
So we're going to have to cut somewhere.
That's correct.
A state mandated-funded program is forcing us to go into our pockets for, you say half, I say, you know, $3.5 million. You know, I took the position last time that we need to initiate number two and three together. We need to work on other funding sources, but we need to let, you know, someone has got to, at some time, at some point, say, enough is enough. If someone's not the first one, the first candidate to say, you know what, state, we can't do this, you either fund it like you're supposed to, or we're not going to play anymore. You don't look at me, attorney, and tell me I shouldn't say that. Someone's got to draw the line, someone really needs to draw the line. I think we ought to draw the line and say, we're not going to play anymore. You know what? You're not doing what you're supposed to do, funding this program, you know, we're done. You know, we've had this conversation for going on two years. I know the Farm Bureau has been opposed to doing this, but where are they today? Why have they come up with another solution? You know, your statement was, there's some folks with creative ideas, well, where are they? You know, creative ideas do not help our budget. Creative ideas are costing real jobs and real services into Larrabee County. And we don't need a solution, you know, we don't need to, I don't think we need to keep going through this chasing nickels with dollars that we've been doing. I think we need, someone needs to draw a line, and I'm prepared to draw that line.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I was not going to tell Mr. Cox he could not say that, I was going to mention to your board, Imperial County has done what you have just described.
Right.
They're the first county to do that. They were actually the last county to participate in the Williamson Act, probably had the smallest number of contracts, but they did that, I'm going to say, two weeks ago, perhaps, and issue number two, their staff.
Mr. Russo?
You know, I, we are going to have that meeting in Fresno tomorrow, along with the counties in the San Joaquin Valley, in addition to other counties that participate in the Williamson Act program. You know, I think that we need to, we need to see how that plays out, what the options are before we certainly make any of those decisions. But we do need to have a strong work plan. Staff needs to let us know, your staff and assessor staff, what it would take. And I think a work plan is a good idea, because it's going to take us some time to do this. You know, we have an old antiquated property tax system. Unwinding this Williamson Act is a lot more difficult than what, than certainly going into it perhaps. So I think we need to, we need to know what the, what the important dates are. We need to know from staff what we can do over a period of time, in case Williamson goes away forever. And I'm certainly of the opinion that, you know, we've tried, your board has tried long and hard to save Williamson. We're still trying, but at some point, if it's not in, perhaps governors may revise, sometime in the summer, we're going to have to, we're going to have to make those decisions. So I think it's important to have a work program. I think it's important to identify the important dates that we need to be aware of. And then also, some candid feedback from staff, both your department and the assessors, in light of some potential staffing reductions, or reductions in hours, what have you, that we're going to be looking at next year. So that's my comment.
Just want to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Jake, and the staff for actually going through the direction that we were given last, in August, or whatever we looked at this. I am very complimentary of the fact that you had the appeal process for people that did receive the non-renewal notices, so that if they were using their parcels for ag uses, they could send a letter back and say, hey, look, this is what we are doing on this property, please do not cancel our contract. And as you saw, you received 88 of those responses, and 85 of those were in fact in ag uses. So as we look at option number one, for example, I have a couple of questions about option number one. If we're looking at non-prime parcels less than 40 acres in size, those are typically going to be in the foothills areas.
Yes.
And so they're going to be non-prime and larger parcels. First of all, what kind of volume in parcels are we looking at there?
We do not have those figures, but we, when we, just to remind the Board, just digress a little bit, when we looked at the prime, because they were the highest number of subventions that were received, and it was the larger number, and due to the time constraint, we asked to split the program into two steps. One is the prime last year.
Prime and non-prime.
This year, non-prime. So this is the second step of that program. It was because of the staffing and the time limits that we had, and the procedure that we had to go through, that we asked to split the program up.
Okay, well, and I think that regardless of the size of the volume of this, this is good policy here, to be going through the Williamson Act like you did through the prime parcels of less than 10 acres in size, because these are all parcels that have been receiving these tax breaks for no justifiable reason. And that will be the same case with the non-prime parcels. If they are being used in agriculture, they can send that notice back. So I think that this is a great process to enter into. Another note, I will never support option number two unless there is a contingency plan to replace this incentive to keep land in agricultural production. We are an agricultural county, and we are here to stand up for our constituents that we serve, but we also have to remember too, which is why I say there needs to be a contingency plan, because we are also here to stand up for those constituents that receive the services that are being cut due to the loss of the subvention funding. So I think that we do have to move forward, looking at some sort of contingency plan. I know that last year, when we had the discussion, we sort of selected the wait-and-see approach, hoping that the state would maybe in a, may revise, come back and put some of the funding back, or do something. Either way, some is better than nothing, but still, some is definitely not making up for what we're losing. So I do think we're going to have to move forward, looking at another option, an alternative option. We need to include stakeholders in that process. I know there was a group that was convened last year of the Farm Bureau, a couple of supervisors were on that panel, and that group needs to be reconvened and meeting frequently, because this is something that's going to have to be dealt with very soon, and I would sure like to have stakeholder input in the process. I don't think that we should move forward with, just based on our outreach and efforts that we've engaged in, participating in the different statewide discussions, I think there's a lot of counties in our position right now, but we all need to work together and work with the stakeholders and interest groups that have interests in this particular policy. So my, I would support option number one, and then also, moving forward with continuing to convene that Williamson Act interest group meeting.
Just as an interesting segue, I was invited, as of yesterday, by CSAC. There's a CSAC and RC, RC Williamson Act Working Group, and I've been invited to participate in that, and so I acknowledged yesterday that I would participate. Supervisor Case from Fresno County, myself, Supervisor Forster for Amador, Supervisor Gibson from San Luis Obispo, CAO Spikes from Kings County, and Ted James, Planning Director from Kern County, have been invited to participate in this working group, so we will continue to do that. I wanted to make a little bit of a comment about something that started off, Mr. Cox started off his comment by saying, the amount of money that we were talking about is the subvention amount of the money that we would get from the state of California under normal circumstances that we're not going to be receiving. That's not a lot of money. The thing to remember, of course, is, one is that this is one-time effort for ongoing revenue stream. So if it takes three times the money to do this, you recapture that cost in three years, and ongoing you're going to receive those funds. The other thing is that it's a little deceptive, because the subvention does not necessarily equal the tax assessment of the property. And so when you look at a five-acre parcel that's been subvented under the Williamson Act, and been taxed on the basis of being agricultural property, and you look at that, it's actually more of a home site. And as a home site, that land is probably worth a lot more per acre than just strict agricultural property. So the actual revenue stream to the county will, I assume, even in these difficult times of agriculture, or real estate depress, prices, will be much greater than the amount of money we're talking about. In other words, the subvention did not cover the fair market value of this property by a long shot. And so we will have an opportunity then to recover more in the future. Again, it was an effort on our part, we didn't know really what the numbers were going to be. We didn't know how many parcels were worked, like we don't on the 40-acre non-prime. It was part of the process to determine how many parcels are affected, what is the outcome. And I have to concur with Mr. Cox, at the end of the day, you know, out of $3.5 million, $5,000 is a drop. And I think we'll probably find a similar kind of drop when we get to the 40-acre parcels as well. But the same argument is there, it's not just about the loss of subvention, it's about the loss of what is the real value of that property, if it gets assessed at its fair market value, as opposed to the subvention money itself.
If I can, I think that's why the Farm Bureau and these groups need to step up with the realization that the real property tax on their property is not going to be $3.5 million to us, it's going to be much higher than that. So it behooves them to be working on that in our behalf. The work group needs to be working on, how do we make the county whole, how do we replace those funds? We cannot continue to absorb $3.5 million year after year after year. I mean, that's why I'm wondering, this working group needs to be really sharp in putting together a plan. So far, I don't see a plan. All I hear is, oh, we're going to get the governor to put the money back in.
Well, and let me respond to that a little bit, because that, you're exactly right. I mean, again, in context, the entire program for the state of California is $35 million. Now, in the context of the county, of the state budget, even in difficult times, it is also a drop.
Yeah.
It's very, very tiny. However, when you look at the numbers and see that Larrabee County is about 10% of that total, you can see the counties in this, particularly the counties in the valley, San Joaquin Valley, are the primary beneficiaries of the Williamson Act contract, and therefore the primary losers. When they take the money away, the poorest counties of the state are the ones that get the biggest impact. Imperial and Larrabee County are normally the number one and two sadly poorest counties of the state, and they're the, they're two of the bigger ones. And then Kings, it's a big percentage of Kings County's budgets, $5 million in Fresno County, it's big in Kern County. So we are the counties that are affected by this, you know, in a very way, prime way. So there was an effort made, and I'm sure we'll hear about tomorrow, again, as we go to this meeting, an ongoing effort. I know Senator Cox in Sacramento is trying to lead an effort to try to get money back into the budget. But I was with a small group that met with the governor, it's been maybe 60 days ago now or so. His take on it was, when the state budget gets better, the money may become, could come back. If the state budget doesn't get better, don't look for it to come back. But I know there were counties who were out there saying, we've got to convince the governor, this is a critical program, we've got to have it, blah, blah, blah. But I don't think personally, that I, that it's not in the cards. When you look at the LAO's projections of the future state budget problems, they're not this, this year and next year, they're out as far as the eye can see. So that being the case, you know, the expectation this money will come back is not good. And the other thing is, it has to be reliable. We can't just depend upon the how, you know, if the state budget's fine, we've got money, if it's bad, we don't. We can't, we can't operate that way. So I do think we need to look at alternatives. And I think that there is an alternative short of termination of the contracts, which deals exactly with what Mr. Cox was talking about. The amount we get on property tax and farm property tends to be about 1/3, or 30%, I think, of the total tax that's imposed. So that $3.5 million, if we take that figure, it's going to be three times that amount of money to the taxpayers if the program goes away. So there is a way in which we could be compensated for by the property owners, and not have to go to the full extent of, you know, getting rid of the contracts and having all the taxes assessed that otherwise would occur without the contracts. I think we need to pursue that very, very aggressively, and, or we also look at parcel ization, and whether we would have assessment districts, that's a lot more work with the assessment process. I think simple contract language may be the easiest way to go forward, and I see County Council leaning forward over there to say something.
Mr. Chairman, I think Larrabee County has been at the forefront of trying to address this. Two years ago, your board asked me to draft language, which Supervisor Cox carried to CSAC, and which is now, in a slightly different version, a bill that's going forward, which would sort of give us cancellation fees equal to the subvention we would receive. Unfortunately, as Mr. Russo and I learned in a conference call not too long ago, there isn't enough money in cancellation fees to make us whole, at least as the way the bill is drafted. We then drafted language to embody what I believe the Farm Bureau President called "your extortion proposal." That is set for discussion tomorrow. There is another county that has come up with an alternative proposal. The key, we felt, when we were having discussion amongst, it must have been at least 35 people, wasn't it? But they were all staff. The key is to get input from, from your boards, from elected officials, as to what you want to see as a policy matter to be taken forward, and then we could maybe do more of a full-court press.
I thought I was going to say something else, but I can't rethink what it was right now, but it comes to me. Mr. Ennis, did you have anything?
No, I just think that all these counties that are involved in this are on the brink, and realize they've got to make a decision one way or the other. And I think what this meeting is all about tomorrow is, put our heads together and say, how are we going to go forward from here? Because I think, I don't believe it's coming back. I just don't believe it's coming back.
Talk about the subvention.
I'm talking about the subvention.
I concur with you, if it does come back, it'll be off in the future sometime, which doesn't do us any good now, and it doesn't make it very reliable. I think that the important thing here too, again, is we're talking about not necessarily pulling a trigger, but actually doing planning. So we're not, we're not here today to say, you know, get ready as of November 1st, or whatever the magic date is, we're going to, we're going to pull the trigger, and we're going to file a motion for non-renewal on every parcel in Larrabee County. That's not what we're here today to decide. We're here today to decide, how do we plan going forward? We're planning for the future, not knowing whether or not we're going to see some sort of relief from the state of California, not knowing if we are going to be able to work out something with our constituents and our property owners about how to go forward with some alternative plan to the cancellation. But I think, first, and I said this before at the last meeting where we addressed this matter, I think all options have to be on the table. We really have to have everything there from a standpoint of discussions. And I think that, you know, the Ag community needs to understand that the county may be in a position where they have no choice but to terminate all contracts. That's not what we want to do. We'd rather find some other way to deal with this, but we know, because a lot of farmers are in trouble. I mean, this is not, this, we have a, we have a very big farm economy, but we don't necessarily have a strong farm economy. When you look at a lot of farmers, not all farmers are doing well. Some farmers are hanging on by a thread, some of them are not even hanging on. So we don't want to be the last nail in the coffin for people that says they're out of business because of what we've done on our property taxes. And that's one of the benefits of the Williamson Act contract, is it's based upon production and cost versus land value, because land value doesn't always work very well from a farming standpoint. It's not what my land's worth, it's what I'm earning, what I'm making on my land. So I think, again, we should be looking at, from addressing today, planning. Not that we're making a decision today, what we're going to do as we go along the route, but we're going to have to make some difficult decisions down the road. And so, and we have time.
And we have time. And we have time. You know, to notice, to give the notice of non-renewal, we have until December 1st, is it, Jake?
I think so. What I may suggest to the Board, if I may, is two things. Is one, if the Board could make a decision on the three options, it sounds like option number one and three is why you want us to pursue this work year. We will come back to a report in two weeks or three weeks to give you the schedule, give you the number of non-prime ag lands, parcels. We had those figures last year, they haven't changed, so we can give you that, what the estimated work program and timeline is associated with that. The other thing is, is that we do have in our general plan, we did rely a lot on Williamson Act and ag preserves. We took that out, or we made/or other equivalent type of program. Recognizing that the Williamson Act program may be in trouble, that we wanted to have some language in there, where we're not just singling out one program that we could implement from Larrabee County's standpoint. As everybody says, is the RVLP is a very strong tool. That may be a way to expand that program, to make it more applicable to Larrabee County in how we deal with agricultural lands. County Council has been very proactive in looking at a different kind of... County Council has been very proactive in looking at a different kind of revenue stream for us, or rather than the contracts themselves. We're looking at potentially development agreements for activities on Williamson Act lands to help offset that loss of subventions. We have to keep our mind open, we have to be creative, and we have to be able to apply these kinds of options when we have the opportunity. And it may not be resolving the whole program, but we can start looking at it in terms of a work program and where we want to get at the end.
If I might suggest to our staff, I mean, to our board, to board members, I think we should also include number two from a planning standpoint, and my purpose for that is to give context. If we're going to go to the farming community and say, "Look, we're looking at something under number two, which is something short of termination," we need to have the context. This is what happens to you if we did the termination of all Williamson Act contracts. This is what happens to you if we do option number two, the variation of option number two. If we don't do that, then I don't think we're, we're not really giving the full story to the, to the ag community. They need to understand that, like decisions made by Imperial County, some counties are saying, you know, some counties, small counties where ag is very small part of their county, very small part of their budget, they're saying, "We can absorb these costs and we're going to go, go forward and keep it in place." For counties like ourselves, where it's so large, and not only large in terms of the population of farms and acres, but also in terms of the economic impact, that's not necessarily an option we really have over the long term. So I think it's important to put this in a proper context. If we have a, if it's terminated, "Mr. Farmer, this is what this means to you. If we can go with option number two, this is what this means to you." And it gives a proper context for them to be able to make an informed decision. And it gets away from the idea that, that council was saying, where someone calls it the, the strong arm, strong arm option, or something of that nature, because we're really on the same team. We're trying to help farmers stay in business. At the same time, we have to run a county government, and we, and those farmers need the services that we provide also. And, and so, you know, roads are very important to them, public safety is very important to them, and so it's important for us to be able to maintain those services, but we have to have a revenue stream to do that.
If I may suggest.
So if I, I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstood. The message I want to send is not to the farmers. The message I want to send is to the state, because the, as counties start piling on and saying, "State, we're going to cancel these contracts," those farmers are going to go to the state, and they're going to put the pressure on, and I believe they can put more pressure on our state officials than we can. And so my, you know, even though it is a notice to them, and I, and I would agree with your recommendation to approve all three, or to, so that they're working on them, but, you know, we need to send a message all, to the farmers and to the state. The farmers need to be on our side.
That's a good point, and that's one of the things that, that was one of our concerns, was some of the counties who were simply taking the position of, "Well, just going to tough it out and we'll keep the contracts in place," sends the wrong message to the state of California, because that says, "Oh, I guess we can cut that without having any implications." So we do want to send the message to the state. No, there are implications for all of us. We can't just suck it up and do this.
But I think the message has to go to the governor, because he's the one that blue-penciled it. He's the one that blue-penciled it.
Well, and, but I just want to make a point of clarification, because number two is preparing an implementation plan. It's not illustrating for purposes of context.
If I may summarize, what I understand the direction is, is go ahead and do a work program for number one, we'll come back within three weeks and give you the specifics of that work program. Number three is an ongoing dialogue and discussions as we find out more information.
And will you convene that group again?
Well, then, then number two is, what I would like to be able to do is basically, in the context of the chairman, bring back a report in, like, the end of April, where we can get the county assessors involved in helping formulate the, what the consequences are if the non-renewals do occur, what the financial impact or fiscal impact is going to be on the, on the farmers themselves, and what other options that we can look at. And so we can bring back a report at the end of April on that, because that's going to, a little bit, a little bit more complicated than doing our work program. So if I may get direction to do that, I would.
So number, you're not saying, you're not going to be creating an implementation plan for how we're going to cancel these contracts? You're just going to illustrate what?
The consequences are if the non-renewals do occur.
Okay. So.
I think you can't do the one without the other, though. You can't get the information that you're wanting without creating a preliminary implementation plan. You've got to see what the implementation plan and how that's going to affect it, so.
Another way of looking at it is that the one will dictate the other. In other words, if you, if you show the comp, what the implications are, then, then it becomes obvious there are things you have to do to do that. I mean, one of the processes you have to follow, we know there are certain time constraints, there's the issues of, of work that's required to be done. Even if we decided we were going to do that, we probably wouldn't be able to do it all in one year because of there's so much, so much work to be done.
Right.
Then you would say, "Okay, so how do you prioritize?" And so there are a lot of, when it comes to an actual plan, you know, that, that still would have to be worked out, and we don't necessarily have to be working on that now. But I think it's important to show the context, I think it's important to make, send a message to Sacramento that we're not going to be able to just say, "We're going to tough it out and Tulare County is going to take the $3.5 million hit every year." I don't think we want to send that message to them at all. And I know that's also been the report, that's been the position taken by the CAO of Kings County. You know, his point has been, I've heard him many times, say, "If it weren't for the, if it were not for the subvention, Kings County wouldn't be in this program." And I think we could all say that. If, were it not for the, the subvention that we've been receiving from the state of California, we would not have gone down this road, because we just simply couldn't afford to do it. So I think it's a, I think it's a good approach, and I think it sends the right message, both to our constituents and to the state of California. I think we need to keep the message on the, on the, on the table.
Very good.
Okay, so I entertain a motion?
Entertain a motion to implement all three as we've discussed.
Second, Ted. Vote is three to one. Banipole, no. Three, yes. Cox, Worthley, and Ennis.
Chairman Worthley, members of the board, thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda for today, except for closed session. Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do have matters on for closed session today. Item A is off agenda, you have items B and C on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this morning.